Okay, I guess we can start. Welcome, meeting of the West Newbury Board of Selectmen Monday, November 16th. It's 7:06 PM. This meeting is being broadcast on local cable TV and recorded for rebroadcast on the local cable channels and on the internet. The meeting is also accessible by remote participation. If people were wondering why there was no link, we had a massive Zoom bombing last, at the last meeting. It was really unacceptable. We couldn't, the meeting couldn't actually even function. So we're trying to make it not, not accessible by someone just searching on the web. So that's, that's why it's a little bit harder to get on today. It's a Zoom meeting.
We also, we also enabled the waiting room. So instead of people just joining the meeting immediately, they enter a waiting room. And people are muted automatically upon entry. So that does make things a little more difficult for us to manage the meeting, but we're trying to avoid what happened last Monday, which was really outrageous and terrible.
Would just, would you suggest that we do that for our committee meetings?
I'm going to put together an updated guidance on the hosting of remote meetings. This was the first time it happened to us. So we don't want to overreact, but it was, it was a truly terrible thing. And so there are some tips that we've been working with our IT and AV consultants on how you can minimize risk. And one of those things is not to put the link as a live link on your website because what we think happened is it might have been like a bot and not individuals, but more of like a computer algorithm that, that really hijacked the meeting. And had like all kinds of horrible things.
Okay. On the announcements, the Community Preservation Committee, the annual public hearing regarding needs, possibilities and resources of the town relative to the CPA Act in the areas of community housing, preservation and open space and recreation. So people can, can visit that virtually. That will be Thursday, the 19th at 7:30 PM. So this is something that, that part of the Act, the Community Preservation Act annually, so that members of the, the Community Preservation Committee can, can learn about interests of the members of the community have and maybe direct funding or directly, the, the assistance of people requesting funding towards that area. So that's the first thing. The Pentucket Arts Foundation is having their Acapella Night, which is always, always a great event this year as, as everything is going to be virtual. It will be Saturday, November 21st at 6:00 PM. Tickets are $10 and they're available at pentucketarts.org. The proceeds go to the Pentucket, Trittown, Pentucket Region. This, this year's performers are the Nor'easters from Northeastern University. I don't know if Jen is here or not. I don't, don't see her. And so finally, anyone that needs news and announcements, westnewbury.org, go to subscribe. First item of business is an request for appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals by Kim Monahan Borgioli. And we went over Kim's credentials at, at the last regularly scheduled meeting and she had expressed an interest in the, in the zoning board position, the associate position in it. But the, she hadn't filled, formally filled out the, the application. So that has been done. So we were all happy that she was willing to do this. A great, very excited about it. So I'd make a motion to appoint Kim Monahan to the Zoning Board of Appeals Associate Position.
Second.
Discussion?
And just clarify one thing, Archie. So the request is actually to appoint Kim to the full position. The associate position is held by Dennis Lucy. And at the last meeting, you may remember I had said otherwise because at the July 2nd ZBA meeting, in the absence of an associate, the ZBA had asked Dennis if he would be the full member and he said that he would. And so when we got Kim's letter, I contacted Dennis to see if he wanted to be the full member. And he said he would actually really prefer to be the associate.
Oh, okay. I wasn't aware of that. Okay.
Yeah. And I checked it with Kim and she said she'd be, and she's on the call tonight, I believe. But she said she'd be happy to be the full member. So the request is to appoint Kim as the full member.
Okay. I, I will, let's, I amend, I will amend my motion to that. What, what is the the term? Yeah.
Let's see. What? Get that for you.
We need Joe.
He did, he did have it. And if we didn't have it, oh, my word to his email. So let's see, all of the other appointments. Oh, it's a, it's a five-year term. I don't think I asked Kim specifically. So we should ask her since she's on, is that, is she comfortable with a five-year term?
Not sure which number Kim is actually.
Oh, I see. Cam?
She may be muted. The last, the 781 area code number, actually, I think I have her cell phone. Let me just check. She may be muted. So hang on just a second. I have to. Yeah, that, on my screen's the last, the last number up. It's a 781 area code. If, if you can unmute her.
All I can do is ask to unmute, which I've done.
Okay.
Can, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Thanks.
Hello. I'm having trouble calling, getting in on the computer for some reason. So I just dialed in.
Great. So did you hear the discussion?
I did, yes.
And so now, and I hadn't mentioned that to you about the difference between the associate and the full. And that's a pretty big difference with the full member being a five-year appointment.
I, I mean, I, I don't know what will change in the next five years. I mean, I'll, I'll give it my best shot.
That's great.
It's all we can ask for, Cam.
So I would amend my motion to make it a, the full, full zoning board of appeal position and for a term of five years. Andy, what would, so that would be ending.
Why don't we end it? Does it have to be five years? Why can't we end it? In like the five years in the June, whatever, 15.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that would be June, June 30 of 2025.
Yes.
We'll be flying around. We won't even have cars then. We'll be flying.
Well, I'll be taking SpaceX.
Yeah, exactly. To Groveland. Okay.
We'll be on our way to Mars and mass because you can't live here anymore.
That's right. So with that, with that date in that, I second that.
All in favor, Archie?
Kemp or I?
Parker, I.
Thank you, Kim.
Yeah, Kim, thanks for stepping up. This is great.
I look forward to it.
Great. So Kim, Mike McCarron will be in touch regarding how to get sworn in. And we really
Okay.
appreciative of your, your willingness to help.
All right. Great. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye. Bye bye.
I'd like to request to, to put item E next. Some people have to attend another, another meeting. So I'd like to get the, just the discussion with the, with the library board started now. If any of the other board member, selectmen have any problem with that, I'd like to make that the next item.
That's fine.
That okay, Glenn?
Glenn's muted.
Yep. Sorry about that. I try to keep muted so you don't hear the background noise in my house. Yep. No problem with me.
So, um, one of the members at, at the last meeting, I just wanted to know how, how we were doing with the library. With staffing. Was there enough staffing? Was there too much staffing? Basically with, with the, the way the library has changed in function a lot because of the, because of the coronavirus pandemic, there were just some questions as, as to that. And, and so I handed over to Corinne. It just, your, your little synopsis was, was great, Corinne. I was impressed with everything that's going on, but just give us a, the Cliff Notes version of how things have been going.
Sure, sure. I'm, I'm happy to. So the pandemic obviously has changed our operations completely because of curbside service and not letting the public in. We formerly, a lot, a lot of the work that patrons actually did formerly is now in our hands. So anything that wants to get out to the public, we have to do all the steps now. You know, people have to call us, email us to request items or ask for recommendations. We have to go retrieve them, check them out, bag them, bring them outside. So there's just, there's additional work in addition to just all the regular things that happen in a library. And I don't know if you saw the circulation statistics, but we started curbside on June 15th and we've slowly been inching our way back up to our regular circulation. And right now we're only 25% behind where we were last year. So you can imagine that with the extra staff work and then the fact that we're moving closer to our regular circulation statistics, we're, we're plenty busy over there.
I saw that. The, the note, I was, I have to say, I was amazed that that many people coming. Is that a few people getting lots of stuff or is it lots of people getting a few things? Or what would you say?
Um, well, so we used to have about 150 people on average in the library a day, and now we have about 40 transactions a day. So if you think about family groups coming in, it's almost comparable. You know, before they were counting, you know, maybe mom would come in with three kids or whatever, but now there's only, you know, one transaction being counted. So it's, it's pretty comparable. It's, it's, I think a lot of people are surprised how many people do use the library.
Archie, if I could just make a couple of comments.
Sure.
Early on in the pandemic, Corinne did a lot of research about how other libraries are locally and across the country were handling operations. And she drafted a phased reopening plan for the library, which she circulated to the health agent and Angus and the public health nurse. And that's something the Board of Trustees worked with her on to finalize and approve. So that's what we've been using all along to determine, you know, when we could open for curbside, you know, when and if we'll be ready to open to the public. So it's, it's a very kind of structured approach to this, and it's really based on the infection rate in the public, which as we all know, keeps climbing. So I think for the near future, we'll continue to be using curbside service and continuing to offer all the other services that we can, you know, given the restriction of the building being closed.
Just an off the wall question. Is this going to be harder with the, the weather getting poorer or not a big deal?
No, because where the curbside pickup, it's kind of right in the alcove. When people come to the parking lot, they call in and say they're there. And then the staff brings the, the books out and lays them. I mean, if it's a blizzard, maybe it would be difficult, but.
We have a nice vestibule that we've sort of recognized as space to use in the events of inclement weather. And it allows people to come in and get their things in a driveway, but not come into the main part of the building.
I also just wanted to make two other comments about the way this discussion happened. I think I talked to quite a few people just to get feedback and I think most people agree that it's a good idea to kind of evaluate where town staff is and if they're being fully utilized. But most people felt like it shouldn't just be the library. If, if we want to do this, it should be across all town departments and it should be handled in a consistent way. The other feedback was that some, it was such a long discussion with no facts that some comments were made that gave the impression that library staff were being paid for not working or that the trustees were not doing their job. And, you know, in normal circumstances, people might be offended by that, but in these circumstances where people are really working so hard to provide services, it's kind of demoralizing. So I just want to pass that along as, as the feedback that, that's, you know, kind of happened after the meeting. I, I think it's great that we've had this opportunity to provide you with facts and Corinne did a great job, you know, summarizing what's actually involved. So I think this is a constructive discussion.
I, I agree with all of that. And I, I was, I was impressed with the, with the material that you provided, Corinne. It was a good learning for me.
Sure. Yeah. I think most people have no idea what goes into running a library. So that's no fault of yours at all. It's just, you know, if more people knew what went on, you know, it would be, we would have better publicity, I guess.
And, and I just might say one thing, which is that you could see the programming strides that Corinne and the staff have made. And that's going to continue on to try to figure out ways to deliver programs for people that are shut in, that are not being able to get out. And I think that Corinne, she didn't mention that. She just talked about circulation, but I know that she thinks that's really important too. Yeah, I thought the new program was kind of interesting and that, yeah, that's going to be a long-term benefit. And I guess, you know, it's the silver lining to a pretty dark cloud that we're all living in right now.
Yeah, I agree completely. It's been one really nice benefit of this.
Archie, can I speak?
Yes.
So I guess I'm the one who brought it up and I kind of take exception to that, what was just said. Because at no time did we demonize a library or its staff at all. And I think many times I was the one who said, this is not just about the library. We need to do this across the whole town. And we realized that we didn't have control over the library because of the Library Board of Trustees. And it was important, and I think it was even mentioned, you know, we, no one thought it would last this long. And when we have people coming to us saying, you know, we can't use the library, we can't use the town hall, we can't use the annex, but our taxes are going up. Why is that? So I thought it would be a good exercise to make sure we go across the board in the town. And not, and I think it was, if I'm not mistaken, I'll look at the minutes saying more than once that we are not doing this to the library. We were just talking about it because it's a, it's a place that we're, we're unique. We don't have a lot of different services. We have, you know, the Council on Aging, we have the library, but there's the interaction type of thing because we're such a small town. So I thought, and I think the board thought it would be a good idea to have this conversation. Because to explain it, and I think this went extremely well because like what you said, Corinne, we don't know, you know, we're lame and we don't know what it takes to run on a library. And when people just see it closed and they might not even utilize the great things that you do there, and they see their taxes going up, they want to know why. And now this was a great discussion. So I take, you know, because I think that was aimed at me and that was, I couldn't have said it like more saying, this is not about the library. I'm not pinpointing the library. We need to do this across all town government because our revenues are down, everybody. So we, we needed to take a deep breath and try to reevaluate because we're going to start into another budget season. So this exercise, which just started with the library, is an important part of budgeting for next year.
Glenn, I think it's important to point out that I had more than one person approached me who found the tone of the discussion at the last meeting to be troublesome. And I'm not going to elaborate, but you need to know that it came from multiple people querying me.
Well, as in, well, have them, have them, you know, tell them not to do that. Tell them to give me a call. If they had the energy to call you, have them give me a call. Why don't we review the minutes? And I would be glad, it's actually on YouTube, but I, it's, it's just a fact. We've been closed. We made a, and I think I even said, we made an important decision. Like other towns have furloughed people, have let people go. We value our great employees. So we wanted to make sure we paid them through this horrible pandemic that we're all going through. But as selectmen, if we don't look into every single department before we start budgeting next year, then we're not doing their job. And I understand when we start, you know, questioning the quote unquote library and we don't have, I think that it's important to do that because this great discussion, now we have good, excellent material that when somebody questions it, they can see it. We didn't have that before. So just, just, I'm just trying to do my job. And if I hurt anybody's feelings, I'm sorry, but come on.
Okay. I think it would, ultimately it was, yeah, somewhat rough around the edges maybe, but we got, we got, we got some good information. I, I feel much better about knowing what the library is, is doing. So I'm just speaking personally.
Yeah, that was good. And Corinne, thanks for putting it together.
Sure, no problem. Yep.
Okay. Any further talk? Let's move on to the next item. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have some new, we'll summarize this real, real briefly. The, the governor as of Friday evening, there's some new coronavirus updates related to somewhat curtailing some activities in the town. All of these are available from the, the websites of the Commonwealth, the Department of Public Health. Is, is there anything really Angus that you think we should, we should go over?
Well, I think.
There's a lot here. There's a lot here. I can't go over 30 pages. No.
Yeah, I think there's really, I think three takeaways from all of this. One is obviously, you know, Board of Health's reminder that went out via the web and the email that the, the mask is at all times in all public locations, even if you're not within six feet. That's obviously a change from what the standard had been. And so we just want to say that repeatedly because it is a, a big change. It is statewide and that, that's the first kind of main takeaway from this. The second is, and Paul brought this to my attention from this, these slides and just so you know, what, what I included in your packet is actually about a third of the overall slide deck. I tried to only include those that were, I mean, there was a ton of information, but the main thing is that they're not going to be doing the color, the, the system for how they're going to kind of assess risk is, has changed pretty dramatically. As you know, West Newbury went into the red category for a couple of weeks in a row. And with a population our size, it, it took very few cases for that to happen. So they're changing how they kind of measure that. So that's something Paul could speak to in much more detail than I can, but, but I wanted to make you aware of that because I know that people have been paying attention to those daily maps and color coding. And I don't think, I don't see Paul on, if, if he's on, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you had questions about that, I would say we, you know, invite him to a future meeting. And then the third big takeaway is this, and Mike might want to elaborate on this. This is the change to the Permit Tolling Act.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's obviously, you know, that's something that just happened last week. I, you know, we didn't become aware of it, or I didn't anyway, until after it had already been signed into law. But basically the prior kind of ability of a community to have an open-ended delay on starting a hearing has been curtailed to where those, those normal statutory timelines that would have run prior to COVID, instead of being told indefinitely are now, those clocks start to run as of December 1st. So that's, that's something that I sent around to all of the permitting departments to make sure they're aware and that the boards and commissions that they provide staff support are aware of, of that change that so that, that's the third main point from all these.
Yeah, I think just so people know, tolling is kind of a word people may not be familiar with, but basically because of, because of the, the COVID, the, the Commonwealth had allowed a lot of, say there was a conservation hearing that needed to take place or something to that effect, that, that those hearings could be delayed indefinitely in, in terms of the state, the state of emergency declared by the governor. But, and it was going on and just as of last week, they changed that so that now the clock does start ticking with the usual timeframes as of, as of December 1st. So I never knew what the word tolling meant either. So that's why I threw that in.
Mike, is there, do you want to say anything more? Was that, was my summary sufficient?
No, I think that the, the word you were looking for, Archie, is suspended. Is that essentially is that the timeframe, tolling means that the timeframe for which a board must act was suspended for this period. And basically that, that time period ends, I mean, that, that suspension, I should say, ends on December 1st. And the clock starts up again. So any proposals that are brought before a board which have a statutory time limit in them, now that clock proceeds.
It ends November 30th and starts ticking December 1st, or it ends December 1st and starts?
It ends December 1st. December 1st is day one.
Okay. So the clock starts ticking on December 1st.
Right.
Okay.
So if it was a 30-day thing, it would have to be, it would have to be done by December 30th.
Right.
Well, no, no, that's not true.
Well.
No, because.
31st. There'd be the 31st.
Yeah, but, but you, you don't count weekends, do you? I thought you didn't.
You do. You do.
I'm sorry.
It's a little nuanced. If the time period is 10 days or less, then you don't count weekends or holidays. If the time period is greater than 10 days, then it's just regular calendar days.
And, and holidays too?
Yep. Okay. If it's more greater than 10 days, the period, then you have to do it, then it has to be, it's just regular days.
Okay. So under 10, under 10 is when you, you, it doesn't count for holidays and weekend. Okay.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. That's an important point. I think everybody knows that anyway. That's not, that's nothing changed. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The next item is a consideration to exercise the first refusal option pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 61A, Section 14 for the, for a portion of the land at 183 River Road, the Gru parcel, if, if people are familiar with that. So.
But not the whole, but not the whole parcel.
Correct. So this is a small, a small area that is to be subdivided off of the large, the large property and to accommodate one, one house lot. And the, the, this has been looked at by the planning board and every, and the large parcel itself ultimately will, will be maintained as a 61 in Chapter 61A. So only this small partial of, I believe, approximately, is it? So only this small parcel of, I believe approximately, is it, is it two acres or?
Just under four and a half, I think.
Oh, four and a half. Okay. Will be, will be taken out of 61A. So that's the background. And the good, the good thing is that the major parcel, that this part is right on, right on River Road. So it would be sort of a typical house lot along River Road and the, but the large parcel would still remain in 61A. So I would entertain a proposal, a motion on this.
Yeah, I move that we waive our right of first refusal on the group property on, on 4.43 acre parcel, the group property on River Road.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor? Archibald, aye.
Harper, aye.
Kemper, aye.
Let's see. Hey, Jen?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, your hand is up. Do you have a question?
I did on the last subject. I just was concerned about what, what the enforcement was going to be on the masks. Is there a fine that's going to be issued or how's that work?
There is not a fine scheduled. The Board of Health took that question up about a month ago and did not vote to establish any fines at this point.
So what's the teeth behind the law? For the rule?
Well, that's the, this is the, this is not the, the town's regulation. This is, this is from the, this is from the Commonwealth. You have to ask the governor.
Okay, so, but Angus said the Board of Health voted not to take up any fines. So that's a decision that the town made.
It, yeah, I mean, they did that, that was a month ago. So that was prior to this recent change. And, you know, they, they could reconsider that, but at this local fines.
Thank you.
Sorry about that Archie. There's a raise hand, lower hand function. And I noticed that Jen had her hand, so to speak. So sorry, I didn't see that earlier. So I believe Rick, you made a motion.
Right, I made a motion.
Everybody, everybody voted it.
Okay, sorry, I got distracted.
Glenn seconded it and then it was approved 3-0.
And, and that's based on the form of the vote on page 36 of the packet.
Correct.
All right. So we'll prepare that for your signature and let you know. We'd like to get that signed and recorded this, this week. So we'll, we'll send you a note when that's ready for signature.
So the next item is D, information regarding the recent mass housing issuance of a 40B project eligibility site approval letter for the property at 28 Coffin and 566 Main. Angus, you can, you can summarize this better to, so people understand what the, what the term eligibility means. I would have you do that, please.
So the as people know, the developer with an option on the land at Coffin Street and Main Street had requested a letter of project eligibility and site approval from Mass Housing. And that's been pending for some time that Selectmen put in comments initially back in June. Then a revised plan was submitted and the Selectmen submitted updated comments in August. The timeframe for the mass housing review has always been indeterminate. There's not, it's not a formal permit process. Mass Housing is not a regulatory agency. It's a, but it is a required step in order for a developer to apply for a comprehensive permit locally under Chapter 40B. They need to have a project eligibility and site approval letter from Mass Housing in hand. Now that that is, letter's been issued, it does give the developer the option to apply for a local comprehensive permit. At this time, nothing's been filed, but, but it's a step in the process. So the letter as issued by Mass Housing does summarize, to some extent, the comments that were received and provides some direction to the developer as to what they would need to do in their submittal. You know, I don't know that much of that goes beyond what our local regulations require anyway. Last spring and summer, the Board of Appeals did a wholesale rewrite of the 40B application rules, which are posted in the ZBA website. And our local requirements are as, about as stringent as can be in this legal framework. So I don't know that the Mass Housing letter really goes any beyond what already would have been required.
So I think the take home message is, again, that eligibility doesn't mean this has been approved or anything like that. People shouldn't get the, shouldn't get that, take away that message. Simply means that the developer is now eligible to send his proposal to the, to the town, to the zoning board of appeals to, to see if his comprehensive permit would, would be granted. So, so that's, that's where it stands now. So.
Yeah, a couple of, yeah, just brief additional points. So any, any application will be subject to our local rules. Those are posted to the ZBA page on the website. Archie is, yeah, I mean, there's nothing, no permits have been issued, no permits have even been applied for. And it's important for everyone to keep in mind that under Chapter 40B, the Conservation Commission does retain full jurisdiction to enforce the State Wetlands Protection Act, just as they would for any other application. And that if there was to be an application filed, that would be filed separately with the Conservation Commission for an order of conditions as it would for the ZBA. Does ZBA under Chapter 40B basically stands in the place of other local permitting entities like the planning board, which in a 40B only has an advisory role, but it does not stand in the place of the Conservation Commission, which does retain full jurisdiction.
Has Conservation opened up their hearing yet?
They are scheduled to open the hearing on the ANRAD on December 7th. And I know the board knows this, but ANRAD is abbreviated Notice of Resource Area Delineation. It is not a order of conditions. It's not a permit so much as it is just the official establishment of the boundaries of the resource areas. So any resource area protected under the Wetlands Protection Act to include wetlands, vernal pools, any perennial streams, if it was subject to Rivers Protection Act. All of those boundaries are determined and made official through the so-called ANRAD process. And so, yeah, the CONCOM is intending to open that hearing on December 7th. They have not yet received an application for an order of conditions, which would be a separate hearing in the future.
Can, can you do that when the ground is frozen or the snow or does that? Can you do these delineations at, or does it have to wait till the spring? I, I don't know.
I, I think that once there's snow cover, there's, there can be challenges, but I, I wouldn't want to officially say yes or no. I think it's, it's better to do it at certain times of year. But I do know, you know, we had a question come up not long ago about whether the, you know, this perk, perk test that's been proposed on the site would be affected by the drought. And we got a lengthy, you know, email from the people at DEP saying that, that know the you know, soil borings are very accurate even in periods of drought because they, the soil characteristics change, you know, very slowly over longer periods of time than, you know, a single season or two.
If they're, if they're going to start delineating the vernal pools and such, there are certain times of year that
Yes, good point.
That you can do that. I'm not sure about the winter time, but I know for a fact there are only certain times of years that you can actually delineate those vernal pools.
That's an excellent point Glenn, because yeah, basically the, you know, in order to determine a vernal pool, you find kind of the, the eggs of different types of amphibious, you know, species. And you find those in the spring because they fill up with the, the snow melt. So that's a really good point, that the vernal pool delineation is, is springtime.
Are there any, any people? What a good, maybe a good question is that now that they lifted this, the, excuse me, the governor has lifted that the tolling, the suspension. Hypothetically, if the application came in on December 2nd, how long does the ZBA have to act on that?
So they would have to schedule or post notice of a hearing within 20 days. That doesn't mean the hearing opens in 20 days, but within 20 days, they need to schedule the hearing. And the legal notice would run in the paper. Once the hearing begins, so Mike, I don't know if there's a hard timeline between the 20 days and the hearing beginning, but I assume it's, you know, got to begin within some reasonable amount of time after the 20 days. But once the hearing begins, it runs for 180 days unless it's extended by mutual agreement with the ZBA and the applicant, which does sometimes happen, but that it's, it's roughly 180 days. And then the Board of Appeals has to issue a written decision within 40 days after the close of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. I thought that would be just good information for people that would want, you know.
So I think that gives you do a total timeline of roughly eight months, perhaps a little more with extensions or some lag time between the hearing and the hearing. So eight to nine months, let's say. We have a question for Ms. Viter.
Yes, hi. Good evening, fellows, gentlemen. I have a question. I hear that there's work that's being done in, in the, in the development area. Does the developer check in with the town with regard to what activities he or they are undertaking on the property?
The, so if it's the, this perk test was proposed, that's something that the Water Commission did need to authorize the tie-in to the water system. Actual testing itself is under the oversight of the DEP.
I think the answer, I think the answer would be no, they don't have to check in, but it all depends on what they're doing. So if they're up there doing stuff, they don't have to check in, Rose. They don't have to check in at all. Unless it's a, you know, they need to do something like the DEP thing would be doing something or something that they would be doing alongside the Conservation Commission or stuff. But just because they're working on the property or doing something up there, I don't think, I'm almost positive they're not legally or anything bound to inform the town before they do something up there. I mean, it would be the same thing as you doing something on your, you know, raking your leaves or moving some mounds of dirt or something. You don't have to notify the town.
Not necessarily. Any work that they might be doing might be in preparation for development. In which case they, they, they haven't even taken possession of the property. And they haven't been given any kind of a, any kind of permission to, to work on the property to begin development.
Well, that, that
Raking leaves.
Okay, I, I didn't mean to downplay it. I was just trying to use a
I understand what your point was and my
Yeah, but that, but them having not permission, that has nothing to do with the town. That has to do with the developer and the landowner. You know, if we got a call from the landowner or the police got a call from the landlord and said, there's a bulldozer up here that has no permission, then the police would go take care of it. But that, that's, I don't, I don't think we're privy, Angus, you tell me. We're not privy to what, what he has or the relationship he has with the landowner or not and what permission they've given him and what they haven't given him, correct?
That's correct. So for instance, you know, if he's out digging test pits or cutting trees, that's something that if the landowner had a problem with that, then he would have some recourse. But that's not a regulated activity. You know, I have talked to Mike McCarron about, you know, what if, let's say they were out digging a test pit or something and it was later found that the digging that took place was within a resource area and therefore, you know, damage was caused to the wetlands. There are provisions for the town to issue, you know, fines or enforcement actions after the fact. But, but not really a mechanism for the town to, to know that that's happening upfront if they haven't applied for a permit.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah, I understand the relationship between the developer and the, and the landowner better. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
I mean, they, they have represented, you know, their engineers have represented to the town that, that these perk tests and test pits are all outside the resource areas. Of course, we don't know that, but if, if it was found later that that was not true, there would be provision for the town to, to require remediation of that.
Angus, are there, are there any more questions from, from people?
Not that I'm seeing.
Okay, thank, thank you all for listening in on that.
Oh, I should note that the, the letter itself was posted to the, it's, people may already know this, but it's, it's posted from the Board of Selectmen webpage. There's a link in the upper left to the site eligibility process. And we did post the letter of eligibility for mass housing a bit. So that's, that's up there on the site.
Our next item is related to, there's been some resident notification to people in the town that there's been perhaps increased truck traffic on River Road. Angus, I don't, I don't really know much about this. So who, who does? Did you, can you talk about this or?
Well, just to summarize the materials in the, in the packet, that's about the extent of, of what I know about it.
Any phone calls or?
No, just the single call.
Okay.
But the person who called, it was, it was Dick Cushing, Dick Cushing. And he specifically asked that this be put on a future agenda. And I did, as you saw, I circulated the, you know, police chief and DPW director. And, you know, basically the, the, you know, the answer is the town can always issue non, you know, non-enforceable kind of guidance signage on truck traffic. But to get something to, to actually prohibiting truck traffic is a much higher threshold. And our DPW director, who's a, you know, traffic engineer with a lot of experience in this, he kind of spelled out in his email, you know, why he didn't think that was likely to happen in this case. Spelled out in his email, you know, why he didn't think that was likely to happen in this case. Uh, but but, you know, that the Board of Selectmen as the highway commissioners, you know, if you wanted to consider. Um, some non and, you know, some uh non regulatory signage, you could do that. We could have Wayne come to a future meeting and talk about that in more detail if you'd like.
It seems that if just thinking sort of in the big picture on this. From what, a a lot of what the uh. Thinking that that Wayne put into it, that a lot of the traffic might be, might be trucks that were uh. Changed their mind about going across the Rocks Village Bridge or thought they, the the height. Uh, was gonna be too much or whatever. If we. Basically, they're already there and and now we're telling, now they decide they don't want to go across the Rocks Village Bridge. So, and we tell them that we don't want them to go on River Road. They're still gonna have to go on some other. We're just gonna move the problem to a different, a different road in in West Newbury. I I don't know, that's that's. All I can think of. I don't think, I don't know if we'd be uh. Would you, we'd we'd just be doing whack a mole that that then another. Small uh rural road in town would become the problem. I don't know, that's just what I was thinking.
I I was a little confused by the um, by the, by the info in the packet. It started out with a comment. The concern was a, an increase in commercial truck traffic crossing the Rocks Village Bridge, then taking a left on River Road. And I'm not sure, um, Wayne may have misinterpreted that because he talked. In his discussion, he talked about traffic choosing not to go across Rocks Village Bridge and instead going on on River Road. Which would be just the opposite. It would be somebody coming, you know, down Bridge Street as opposed to coming across. Rocks Village Bridge first and then, and then opting to take a left on River Road.
And to to continue that sentence, um, Rick. Was that, that's what actually I was gonna speak to this too, and then it says it goes to Main Street. So I think that that maybe somebody's got a MapQuest or something and then they're taking a left and then working their way back up to Main Street to go to ninety-five. I think that's what it said. And what does that mean? Increase? So did it increase from zero to one? Did it increase from two to ten? Does anybody really know?
No, uh, no, there's no, we don't have any uh like truck count out there. But Rick, I I don't think Wayne misinterpreted. I think what he's saying is there's a few different ways. There are a few different reasons he can see why a truck would be on River Road, one of which would be. Uh, you know, if they were leaving the bridge and taking the left, which is what the, what Dick had called about. Uh, but another would be if they were approaching the bridge and saw that, you know, were concerned about the height and then took a right instead of crossing the bridge. So I don't think he misinterpreted. I thought that was. I I I don't know. Um, but no, Glenn, to your question, I think, you know, what Wayne's saying is that. Petitioned uh D O T for this kind of restriction, you have to do that kind of data collection, just the same way you've seen with the. Uh, studies that we did on on Chase Street and elsewhere, uh, and Bridge Street, um, on speed studies. It's the same kind of basically traffic study with. Uh, you know, you do multiple days of traffic counts and would count the number of trucks and the proportion of trucks. Um, so that's something that if the board wanted to initiate, you could. Uh, but uh, I don't know, I don't think it has a high probability of. Uh, success. In fact, you know, Ray Wayne's very sure it would not work. So what he's suggesting.
Or maybe we just, you know, take this under advisement and ask the police if, you know, they see an uptick on it and then readdress this. If this is a real, real, real issue, then we, you know, then we take take care of it. This is the first time. I um, when I first spoke, I heard there was um. And I miss, I misspoke about traffic, uh, truck trafficking, like on Garden Street and uh and stuff like that, that was. Directly related dirt trucks to the new high school. This is, this was not that. I I I kind of lumped it in together. People were complaining about that, but um, I would ask everybody just to keep their eyes open and see if, you know, D P W. The police and just see if this is a real, real problem and then we'll address it. Keep an eye on it, because we don't even know what, if if it's one or two, I guess if one going down there, it's pretty scary. On some portions of that. But how much is it really affecting? I don't know.
I don't know why a, an eighteen wheeler would wanna go on River Road unless they made a mistake.
No, it's MapQuest probably, you know what I mean? Take a left here to get up on ninety-five, uh, something like that. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can, I guess we could make, come up with all sorts of scenarios, but another, another potential scenario is somebody had verbal instructions. That says you go across the bridge and and stay to the left, don't take the right. Now you think just around the corner from where River Road is, you could take a right on Church Street or you could go straight. Um, you know, on on Bridge Street and maybe somebody crossed the bridge and s- their notes said. You know, take, stay to the left and that put them on River Road, but again, it's just a scenario, but. Without more information, we really don't know what's going on.
No, and are these, are these um tractor trailers or are they trucks?
We don't know.
Yeah, because if you, if you get a uh, if you get, if you go up to Lowe's or Home Depot and you buy a washer or dryer. There's always a second, uh, there's always a, it's always um. Somebody else, um, a sub delivers it in a pretty big truck. It's not a tractor trailer, but it's a pretty big truck. People could be just getting deliveries down there.
Could even be Amazon trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, but Amazon keeps theirs uh small enough so they don't have any federal, uh, they don't, they're just small enough. They don't have any federal um restrictions on highways and stuff. Smart little, smart little guys. So, and and I don't know, did Dick, is Dick delivering mail down there part-time or they call him back? I mean, there's nowhere where he lives or did somebody contact him?
He said he saw something on Facebook.
Oh, 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 no. So, no, it's true that, okay.
Okay. So I I would just say that, you know, obviously we take everything serious, just to, let's just keep everybody's eyes and ears open and just see if this is a big problem. Yeah, just ask the police, you know, if they really see a lot of traffic, a lot of big trucks going down there, then we readdress it. You got any cameras?
Agreed.
We put a sign up at the start of the road that says height limit eleven feet. Just kidding.
Or something about. High tide, not recommended for trucks.
I know, I know between noon and one thirty today, there was not a single truck on that road. Cause I went down and and that very slowly traversed the entire road, taking photos of all the uh, because it was a king tide today. So I photoed all the uh. Uh, closest I ever saw was within about three feet of the height of the road.
Okay.
Yeah, but consider that was a, you know, no, no storm, no storm surge, no major rain event up upstream.
Yeah, that's great, that's crazy.
And and even a westerly wind, which would have been pushing the tide away from from shore, you know, so.
Was it as, was it the closest, was it closest to Rocks Village where that um big um field is?
Yeah, that was the, that was the, that was the lowest. But actually, it might have been one spot that was lower. I have some notes.
But, oh, yeah, I I don't mean to digress, but.
Yeah, yeah.
No, we're gonna have to, it's gonna be long but past my time, but the, we need to address that sooner or later. Or that whole thing, I mean, when we get big rainstorms or whatever flooding, that thing's covered. I mean, people can't, could. That big flood, people couldn't even go to their homes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, when you see a meter of of uh, if if sea level rises up a a meter at some point, that road would be underwater in places now.
Which is three feet just for, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
People like, people like me, not not worldly people like you, Dick, that talk of meters.
Sorry.
Okay, um. Uh, next item is a uh. Discussing the goals uh for F Y twenty-one and twenty-two, uh, we haven't uh. Haven't really been able to do that. There's been a lot of other things uh planned, but. Uh, I think it would be a good idea so that we can uh. Budgeting is gonna be a little bit more complicated this year. We don't know exactly where our revenues are gonna be at and where. Uh, I, there's a lot of projects going on in the town already and so. Yeah, I, uh, I think it would be wise for the. Every, all the boards and committees in in the town to be aware of what other boards and committees. Uh, are planning, what what the town itself is is doing so that. Uh, the Board of Selectmen can prioritize what things really need to get done in. In uh F Y twenty-one and what things maybe can be uh planned for for future years. So, so that's, um, that's where I I leave things. I think it would somehow, I think it would be. It's it's very difficult in this time of the uh Zoom meetings, but it would be, it would be a worthwhile exercise for. Uh, each committee to somehow uh present their priority priorities of what they'd like to accomplish this. This fiscal year and see how that fits in with the goals of the of the whole town. So I'm open to suggestions. I I, my, my idea was we have a a Zoom meeting with one or. With one representative from from each, not not necessarily the chairman, just one person from each. Uh, each border committee or commission to present in in a very limited format. One or two uh goals or priorities, or whether their purchases or their objectives. Or bylaw changes, whatever they wanna do uh in this fiscal year, which is already. Uh, you know, we're not halfway through, but we're we're get approaching halfway through this year already.
Uh, you're talking about this fiscal year or next fiscal year? Because we're gonna be start budgeting for. Generally, our goals and stuff, we put them in the budget and then that won't start until July. I just wanna make sure I know what we're talking about.
Well, that's, it's a good point, Glenn. I mean, we uh. We sort of haven't thought about what we're really doing this year because of everything else that's been going on, but. But in terms of budgeting, we wanna know what people might be planning for the, for twenty twenty-two also.
No, I think that's a good, this is kind of like a hybrid or a COVID version of what you wanted to be doing for a long time, Archie. So, yeah, I would support it, but I I would, uh, just to make sure they have to understand it, that what they bring to us. Has been discussed at a uh, the, you know, a posted meeting and voted on. Just not the opinion of one or two people from a committee or not. It has to be a consensus of the board or the committee.
Absolutely, yeah. So Angus, what do you think in terms of the, the, just the time constraints of this? Is it, is it an exercise that? In terms of, we don't wanna slow down the budgeting process, so so um, I don't wanna add two more weeks. Things by 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 doing this.
I think that the main question I had for tonight is the timing. Uh, I I would recommend December seventh. Uh, that's, that would be an extra meeting on that uh, that Monday. Um, because right now, because of the calendar and uh, you know, the Christmas uh New Year's holiday. There would only be, let's see, is it seven? If I got my dates right, just a second. Uh, there would only be the, uh, yeah, the one, potentially only one selectman meeting in December on the fourteenth. So my suggestion would be if we had this on Monday, the seventh. Um, I can send out my budget package ahead of time. Normally, we would, I would send that out. Once the goals had been set and what I thought, maybe this year I could send it out ahead of time. Um, on the budget package and and use that as a way to, you know, reinforce the importance of this uh kind of goal setting. Um, and that the selectman would vote. You know, the Board of Selectmen's goals for F Y twenty-two, which you're meeting on the fourteenth, which is uh. Um, I think would work well with the budget process, but I think that this would definitely, you know, justify a standalone meeting. Uh, I'd be concerned if it's put on a regular agenda, uh, do do we, you know, does it get compressed because of other things that. Tend to come up on the regular uh meetings. Uh, so that's the real question is, do you, do you, you know, agree that makes sense to add an extra meeting for this on December seventh? And if so, we can get this uh invitation letter finalized and sent out, uh, you know, in the next day or two.
Well, to to Glenn's point, and I I agree with it, is is there enough time for with Thanksgiving and. Uh, everything else, is there enough time for. Uh, any, anybody that wants to to uh to present the um. Uh, to ha- to have a meeting and and discuss that.
Well, I think if if we talked about, you know, you and I initially talked about the thirtieth and. And there definitely would not have been time. I think that the seventh is really tight. We could look at something later that week. Uh, but I wouldn't wanna put it to the fourteenth because uh. You know, I think it would be good for the board to have. Sometime after this meeting, uh, to kind of digest things and then to vote your goals. Uh, you know, again, I've had my eye on the fourteenth as the date that you would vote your goals for the F Y twenty-two budget.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's a, it's, you know, probably short, shortish timeline, but. Um, I mean, the fact, a lot of these boards and committees are working on different initiatives already, so they know what their goals are. We just need them to tell, tell us. Largely, I think we know what they are too.
Yeah, I I think the seventh might be realistic. I, you know, as I. You know, said in the response to to your email, I think the thirtieth was, there was no way that that everybody was gonna be able to meet, but the seven then. Become somewhat realistic and.
Let's try it and see if it works.
Okay.
I would agree, I would agree that. Heavy lift, and I think Angus is right, they know, basically. And now this will be Boards, Commissions, Departments too?
Uh, I, right now, it's kind of geared more toward Boards, Committees, Commissions. Which already almost, I mean, that's gotten up to like twenty-six, twenty-seven entities.
Okay. Twenty-seven entity, there's twenty-seven committees?
It might be, that might be a little high, but it's 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 in.
It's, it's in the twenties.
Yeah, it's definitely in the twenties.
Might be a little high, but it's in the twenties. Yeah, we, and we just keep our point in it, and that's what, that's what.
There are a couple in there, you know, like Historic District Commission that really have very, very little, you know. Week to week, uh, so, but but that's, you know, if you include a complete number, that's, that's it.
Okay.
Um, and I would uh, I would make sure they, to go back to um. And, um, excuse me, Archie's point about it's short. And I would put a timetable on it. It's like two minutes or three minutes and then three minutes for us to. To to ask questions or something like that. Put a time limit on it. I mean, we might, obviously, we're probably gonna go over, especially, you know, me putting a time limit on it that I can't shut my mouth, but. But it it needs to be like that, so they don't show up at a meeting with this full presentation that might be ten minutes. And they feel like they were kind of like, why did we bother doing this? They didn't even give us the time, so let's be upfront about the time ahead of time.
So let's say three and, three uh, three presentation, two uh, and two for questions. At least try that, anyone.
Why, why don't we do three presentation and three for questions and each selectman has a minute to ask questions?
Okay, all right.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Good, okay, good.
Um, next item is uh, Angus is going to uh have a, I assume it's a regional meeting. With Congress Moulton and he's uh would like us to provide. Uh, Congressman Molton, and he's uh would like us to provide. Direction on things that that are of concern to municipalities and maybe the federal government could could help them. Uh. I I have I have two or three things, and then we can each say what what we think maybe could be brought up to. I I think concerned and sort of last week was. Uh, we had a different kind of hacking. That was just the the meeting, but um, I I am concerned about uh. Um, municipalities, the uh being uh subject to to ransomware. There's a lot of municipalities and. It the chances are that they're not going to bother with West Newbury. However, they do target sort of small communities with. Uh, that they assume have uh less than vigilant IT protections. So they. Uh, that's one thing, and they look for community that have a abundant free tax. Because they can't say that they won't be, the community can't say, well, we don't have any money when the the ransom, uh, the hackers that. That take over the community server say, well, we know you do. We we know how much. Uh, you have in they look for communities that have a lot of reserves and uh, that would be West Newbury. So. We can't say that we couldn't ever be a target, and I just like the federal government to help protect. Communities in these situations. If you read about what happens, it it's happening all over the country, the. Small towns and school districts, any anywhere in the country, and the response is that the the people call the FBI. But the FBI really can't do it, can't really do anything about it. And a lot of, most of the communities actually end up. Paying the paying the ransom to get their uh, to get their servers back so that uh financial uh. Materials of of citizens aren't leaked uh leaked out or or uh. Materials from the from school districts aren't leaked out or or disciplinary things, anything. That's how they they get the the. Uh, communities of school district to pay is what they what they uh, the hackers had the information that they plan to leak publicly. So. Um, I just like to the the Congress should uh, something that I think Congress should should uh. Work on more. So that's one of my, one of my things that I think they should do and something that we we talk with the congressman about, I believe it was last year. I don't know if it was the year before, but. Continuing to to work on the the CSOs on 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 the Merrimack and and dealing with uh, dealing with uh. Their congressional people in in New Hampshire only by cooperating with with New Hampshire cooperating with Massachusetts will. Uh, anything that we do can be completely wiped out by something uh upstream. So uh, that's, those are the two things that I thought. Um, would be of use to uh West Newbury. So um. Rick or Glenn, what anything, any ideas you have?
Rick, you can go.
Yeah, well, I I guess first, you know, Archie, I'd agree with you that uh, you know, the cybersecurity issue is a big one, and if there's something that can be done. Um, you know, at the federal level that will help out municipalities, um, that would be. Very valuable for us. Um, uh, you know, it's hard to say just what your exposure is, but um, but. Yeah, it's safe to say that we do have exposure and and it's possible that it could be really bad. Um, so that's one. Um, uh, the other one is uh, I'm sure I'm going to get some chuckles for this. Um, and though. Somebody will say it's typical, but um, you know, I. In the next twenty thirty years, in the next twenty to thirty years, we need to deal with um, yeah, it is related to climate change, but it's sort of like the base reason for it, which is we need to deal with um. Our uh, um, our energy systems um. And their contribution to, you know, to uh greenhouse gases and um, and ultimately. You know, I I'm I'm pretty confident that, you know, thirty to forty years from now, everything we do is going to be electrified, and the sooner we do it. The better off we are, and the sooner we get started, the better off we are. We're not going to be able to to uh walk casually for the next twenty years and then sprint for ten years. You know, we need to start to think about it and implement things now. Um, and and um, uh, so.
Well, I I would agree. I would agree totally with that, Rick. But what is this about? I mean, I would agree. That's more globally.
Well, no, 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 Glenn, let's let me finish. Okay, so 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 the so the deal is that it has to be dealt with at a local level. You can't just, you know. The federal government or somebody, somebody can't snap their fingers and say this is fixed. It has to be done at a very local level. Um, you know, locality starts out in the house, but then it goes to municipality and businesses. And um. So, you know, if if because there are, there are gazillions of things we have to fix. And if we don't start at the small level um and let them be additive, then then there's no possible way we can we can do them, that we can fix the problem. So, you know, one of the things that that might be done by the federal government was to um. Uh, make it more financially attractive um through, you either through some form of subsidy, uh, that, you know, they can't address. Tax credits don't help municipalities, but there must be something that the federal government could do to try to make it more uh economically feasible for. Municipalities to work aggressively to change their energy systems.
You so hypothetically, I I'm just trying to get a question, a thing out of there. So a good thing would be then the grants that they're having now for like the electric cars. The 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 um, the 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 money out there for private businesses to be able to get tax credits and so forth for solar fields. And then being able to put those on municipal land and then in turn save us, save us, you know, from using, you know, other. Forms of energy, but in using solar, those type of things? But I I agree with you. I'm just trying to.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Glenn, yes, that would be part of it. And and, you know, part of it, I can't tell you what it would be at this point because um. I quite honestly, I I I don't know what other solutions might might become available. What other technologies might might be developed, but the point is to um, to make it easy for local government to embrace them and to adopt them.
Okay.
And 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 right now, the only way we can do it is um, you know, besides whatever local. Or, you know, regulations or bylaws you might have to work around. You then also have to somehow partner um with somebody else. You know, it's it's much more difficult to take your own initiative.
So I don't know what this is all about, if this is just a dog and pony show and he's not going to follow through on anything. I don't know. We've been doing these things. I'm glad that he's doing it because this is the first time that any congressperson has reached out since I've been a selectman. We always have this from our state reps and our. Um, a state senator always like what our wish lists are and we, you know, for the state level. So I don't know if we have like a bite of the apple or something that can really turn. That's a, that's a good thing in the abstract, but something like what Archie said mentioned about the Merrimack River. Um, is crucial because the federal government made Man- the city of Manchester, New Hampshire, who is supposedly the biggest polluter of the Merrimack River, the Merr- um. It's the Merrimack River starts at the White Mountains, so it's New Hampshire and Massachusetts. You know, they walked them with a huge two hundred and something million dollar fine, and they have to upgrade their systems in like ten years. That's good. I would actually like the. Because when Senator Tar and uh Rep. Mayor came in maybe a year, year and a half ago about the Merrimack River, they said it has to be something stoked with state and federal to be able to get this to be cleaned. But then the about the climate change, Rick, what about more monies for municipalities to protect our shorelines? And shorelines, meaning, you know, obviously something like Plum Island, which has nothing to do with us, that type of shoreline, but our but our river shorelines, like what.
Yeah, no, but yeah, no, I I hear you. Yeah, I mean, West Newbury. I mean, there's, you know, there's mitigation, you know, sort of mitigation strategies or mitigate money for mitigation, maybe. For for things that are a result of climate change, and in that case, E-level rise, you know. Yeah, you know, actually, I had a good conversation with Wayne about it the other day, you know, I mean, you know, we could. Sure, you could fix River Road. It might cost fifty million bucks, though. So how do you? Obviously, we can't afford to do that. Um. Uh, so how do you? How do you address that?
So I I I would agree with everything you guys said. My big thing was the river because I I'm looking for something that, I don't know how many bites of the apple he's going to do. But um, so I'm looking for cleanup of the River Road and maybe some type of, you know, federal help in protecting our, you know, our shorelines, including rivers um in that. But is there a way when you're talking to Angus is? We can follow up, you know what I mean? You know, we we, everything you say to him, he's going to go, oh, yeah, that's great. That's great. That's great. That's great. That's great. But is there a way that we could ask him during this meeting um that, hey, is there a way that we could meet with you in six months to see how our initiatives or our. Ideas have been working or next year or something like that? Because without follow up, you know, he's going to agree to everything. Anybody, any rational person would. Um, because they're all important, but obviously, but you you know what I'm trying to get at.
Yep, yep. Yep, that's good. That's all good suggestions.
Glenn, it that that's, that's in the ideal world. I think if we just, we're just a little tiny little. Town in his district, but if we got something in the back of his brain that some other. A constituent also says, then then it it reinforces it. I'm I'm not imagining that too much is going to come from what we say, but it's. Uh, it's the power of numbers. Maybe other people will say similar things.
Well, I would be very surprised if the Merrimack River doesn't come up because that that that's a big deal. That's a lot of his district.
That's that's what I mean. Yeah.
I mean, he goes down to Peabody, Lynn and stuff like that with big populations, which the Merrimack River, but it's Merrimack River is part of a, you know, a lot of cities and towns up in his district. Yeah, I understand. I mean, you have to do it. We we've been doing it for years and the, you know, to bring back Dick Cushing from our conversation earlier, Dick Cushing's been at since I've been a selectman, been asking uh. For sidewalks at the page from the state. Every time those lists come out, he wants, you know, we still haven't gotten, but you know, you can't hurt.
Okay, uh, thanks. Um. Uh, we're going to defer item I and um. So now Angus, just, I know you're not feeling well. Just briefly go through your last announcement so you can uh head off.
Sure, yeah, I I you, I'm feeling worse by the minute here, uh, just like always with these sinus. Infections, it's uh always worse at night. So um, so let's say uh, the the CARES Act, just status update, we uh, that basically. You know, there's the two cycles we put in for the funding, and then we put in these quarterly reports. So we put in a quarterly report on Friday. It's amazing how little money, uh, you know, we do all this work to document and we uh. And and here's here's the issue. We're going to get more money next year, but because they discount things by seventy five percent. On the expectation FEMA will fund it, we then have to put in with FEMA, even for some things, especially with these Penticet expenses that we full well. FEMA is not going to fund uh, but CARES considers them FEMA eligible. Uh, so they only give us twenty five cents on the dollar. We then have to go file with FEMA and get rejected. And then go back to CARES and what they are calling this reconciliation funding rounds uh next calendar year. So. You know, this has definitely been a, you know, issue for the finance department. Uh, you know, we've done a nice job. We've met all our deadlines. We've got some good systems to make it as efficient as we can, but. Um, we're going to be chasing our own tail on this for a while. Um, and uh. We did put in place that sub-grantee agreement with Penticet last week, and so uh. They can go forward with with purchasing the air filters and and things, so that's going to be really good. But unfortunately, you know, we can, at this point, we can only guarantee them twenty five cents on the dollar. That's that's an example of something that. CARES says is eligible, but when you talk to FEMA, it's only eligible if it's, you know, air filters for first responders, not for schools or for town halls. So. So it's more of a status update, but but we did execute that grant agreement with Penticet. We did file our November thirteenth report uh within the deadline. And uh, we have provided notice to local departments uh. That the funding uh for our round two filing that we put in in uh late October was received. We actually received the money in the bank last week, so that's good. We got a wire transfer of about a hundred and. Hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, so.
I I have a question, Archie.
Yeah.
Um, is this, is this helping us with um in any way with the shortfalls of revenue? Or is this just paying off things um that were um done. Extra due to COVID. You know what I mean by that?
I know exactly what you mean. Yeah, because I was kind of hopeful that this might allow us to. Bulk up our FY twenty one revenue projections since we now have this money in the bank uh that was not. Anticipated when we did the uh budget last winter. Uh, I talked to Stephanie about it, and she said, no, uh, she and she's been on more webinars on this than I have. And she said that it's it's the second scenario you described, Glenn, which is that. In order for it to be eligible for CARES, it has to not have been a budgeted expense. So all of these revenues are offsetting costs that would not otherwise have been incurred except for COVID. So I do plan to, before we have the the tax rate hearing, uh, which is expected to be two weeks from tonight. I do want to talk to DOR directly and just make a hundred percent sure of that, because that would make a big difference if we plugged this uh. You know, even the portion of this money that's going to offset town expenses into our revenue numbers for this year, it would make a difference. Uh, every ten thousand dollars of revenue is is about a penny on the tax rate. Um, so I will confirm that, but I did. I did talk to Stephanie about that a couple of times, and she said that, no, it does not, you know, we don't. Credit it toward our revenue projections for the current.
Also, Angus, it it's it's covering. One-time expenses anyway. In other words, it's not necessarily things that are um. Okay, you picked air filters. Okay, we're not going to buy more air filters next year. Again. It it's a, it's a, it's a one-time thing. It's it's kind of like the reserve fund. It's unanticipated expenses that gets reimbursed, but. Um, those expenses are not expected to happen again anyway.
Well, well, in any, in any situations, will money that we've spent and that is reimbursed. Uh, through CARES actually benefit benefit us in the future? So say for IT. Um, equipment that was purchased in order to address the demands of uh, you know, working offsite. Um, you know, working virtually, uh, you know, is that an example of something where we'll stand to get a later benefit from it? You know, it's addressing the immediate need during during uh. COVID situation, but we'll we'll have ongoing benefit from it?
Yes, uh, yes, we've purchased and will purchase. Uh, we have more on order, uh laptops and other um. Technology investments to facilitate telecommuting uh that went above what we would have had in the operating budget. Uh, so those are investments that will benefit us for years to come. But at least in some instances, uh, that's been for personnel that wouldn't normally need a laptop. So it's kind of, you know, yes, it's a benefit, but the need wouldn't even have been there if not for COVID.
And.
Um, the next item is just a brief update on the uh, the schedule for installation for the charging stations. Um. Both of those are scheduled to start uh this month uh with Paige School scheduled to begin this coming Thursday, the nineteenth. And the nineteen ten building scheduled. and the nineteen-ten building scheduled to begin um on the twenty-third of November. So we're working to get in place the uh contract with ChargePoint and so we'll have be able to have them actually operating once they're fully installed. Um, I think the timeline that we were given, and Rick, you would know this, I think they said it's like three to four days from start to finish, once they start the work. Is that about right?
Uh, yeah, actually, um, at Paige, I think they were figuring on just a couple of days. Um, I think that's what they're talking about. And then um, at the nineteen-ten building, three to four days because there's a little bit more uh involved there. They have to trench and then repave. Yeah, so I, you know, by the end of next week, um it sounds like it should be wrapped up. Uh, the only, you know, the only problem is going to be getting power, getting National Grid into um hook up to in both instances and um but seen as the deadline is imposed by National Grid, I think they have an internal incentive to um to get things connected. Uh, I I guess the um contractor has a generator, can actually test everything out with with their own power once they get it all set up.
So once we get closer to, I mean, we're getting pretty close, but once we get to where we have like firm dates of when these will actually be up and running and available for public use, uh, we plan to heavily promote those through uh, you know, town website, social media to make sure that people know once they're available so we can uh start to see what what kind of utilization they get.
I think I think we've already got four four vehicles, plug-in vehicles for the uh for a photo op.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah.
Good. All right. We can get that out on the social media. That'd be good.
Yeah, well, you gotta wait till they're there to plug into, but uh.
Sure, sure. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's great. Uh, next item, uh, middle high school. Uh, we had a meeting, uh, Glenn, Glenn and I were at last Tuesday. And uh, you can see from the slide deck in the packet how uh, you know, how well things are moving along down there. And uh the uh, there was an amendment voted last week, which was expected, uh, you know, to add toward this guaranteed maximum price. And um uh, there were a number of items that had been moved removed from the project last December through the value engineering process that were able to be put back into the project and still keep it within budget. Uh, not all of the things, uh, but but, you know, a good number of items that have been cut have been put back in. Uh, so.
Because bids were coming in lower than uh anticipated. That's the reason why.
So, uh, you know, similar to updates we've given at prior meetings, you know, projects on schedule. Um, so uh, obviously, that's good news.
Yeah, the for the kids to be starting the school year September of twenty-twenty-two?
Twenty-three, isn't it?
Twenty-three, I think.
No, no, school year starting twenty-twenty-two and then the whole project being done twenty-twenty-three.
Oh, okay, great.
Remember, I asked, I I'm almost positive about that, Angus, because I'm the one who asked that question because that's what people really.
Yeah, no, I said, okay, yeah.
That's what really people care about. They they, okay, the numbers are over with. They already voted on them, you know, then they go, when's it going to be done? When's it going to be done? So I just wanted to make sure. So the kids are going to move in on twenty-twenty-two, but then they're going to have to tear the other one down, tear the middle school down, tear and then build. So it'll be a year of doing all that. So it will be all done twenty-twenty-three.
So basically, the two years from sort of now, previous it people will be in there then.
Correct.
Okay.
And then they will tear the middle school down and then the high school and then build the stadium because that's where the stadium, um, the football field stadium is going um with around where the middle school is.
It'll be a good day.
Great. All right. Um, and then the last item is just an update on the status of the contract for soldiers' sale sailors' restoration. Uh, we'd sent that over to the uh architects of back in uh early November and uh actually, no, I guess it was back October ninth. And they did return a signed copy uh on November seventh. Uh, we're waiting to just get the uh schedule updated to reflect the passage of time. I did reach out to Lynn Spencer uh late last week to see if uh we could connect by phone today, that just make sure if she had any questions or concerns. Um, I didn't hear from her. I was not in the office today because I'm not feeling well. Uh, but I will, uh, you know, we'll keep working with her until we get a contract and timeline fully in place, but we're we're very close to that. And obviously, our goal is to get the design worked on this winter so we can go out to bid late winter, early spring, uh, when the contractors are still looking for work.
Great. So final, uh uh, anyone that wants to uh put put forward ideas for future agendas, one one thing that um we we can't forget is that we did promise that we were going to bring up the uh issue of parking and so forth at Pipe State that in some in some portion uh because of coronavirus and lack of events, no issues have have come up, but that's something that we still have to uh address for the long term.
You have, I do have a list of kind of future items and and one of those is to establish a Pipe State Parking Committee. So that might be a good thing to talk about on this uh board and committee meeting because that's that's in my view, exactly the kind of thing that if uh if it's going to get done, it's going to require the Board of Selectmen to establish some priorities and 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 get it done because it could easily be crowded out. You know, if we continue to be spread thin on on a lot of a lot of different issues, um unfortunately, you know, that's that's something that cuts across a number of boards and committees' interests. And I think if it's going to get done, I think the selectmen need to kind of push that as something and get get other people's attention on it.
And and just to be clear, we're talking about, you know, enhanced parking up at Pipe State. We're not talking about uh because just what's in, you know, all over social media and I'm being asked about a lot is, you know, the restrictions about um parking up there. We're not talking about that.
Correct.
Yeah, it was rhetorical, but I I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood what we're talking about.
When things are normal.
Well, I I'd like to, um, I asked about minutes and um we kind of do this in a bunch of different years. We need to remind again, I think, um, boards and committees, I like to have a discussion of lack of minutes and them understand um a discussion about it and then we can send something out to all the boards and committees um or make it a packet, inner packet. We just assume that everybody understands, excuse me, I'm sorry. We just assume that everybody understands how to follow all of it when we appoint people, but some of these people are new and don't understand that they, you know, they have to keep minutes, they have to give them to the town clerk uh and stuff. So I've gone up and a couple of different committees and there are no minutes and I know they're having meetings. So I'd like to have a discussion about that next meeting, please?
Sure.
Yeah.
There's one question that I want to go back to about the the uh the library that I I I was, I told somebody I would well, actually, two people that I would ask the question tonight. And I tried to look through the material to get the answer, but I can't find it. Um, they said they have seven people on staff. Does that include Corinne? And then what's their staffing level during each day where they said they have forty transactions, I think it was? What's their uh I what's their staffing level, I guess? Um, that would be, I guess, the proper question. If you could ask them, Angus, that would be great.
Yeah, well, I can tell you on the first question that it does include Corinne. I'm just looking at the budgeted staffing for this year. And on the second question, uh, yeah, we can get you that information.
Thank you. Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Hold on, discussion. Do you expect that any of us to be on that molten thing? Are you just going to be representing us, Angus?
Uh, no, I'll I'll it'll just be me on there.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, that original invitation wasn't very clear as to uh.
Yeah, I thought it was all of us, yeah. Motion to adjourn, it was seconded?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Kepa, have a good night, gentlemen. Thank you.